Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for February 24th, 2020. I would ask that we start this meeting tonight with a moment of silence in honor of United States Air Force retired Colonel Ron Lord, who passed this past weekend.
Thank you, and I would like to ask Councilmember Pizzillo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We come here tonight with a heavy heart. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Lord family. Almighty Father, please provide us with the wisdom to make sound decisions for our community. I also ask that you provide safe passage home for all in attendance and watch over all our men and women in uniform, serving here and abroad, that they may be free from harm. In your name, amen.
Amen.
So as noted, Mayor Lord is not here this evening. May I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Lord?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. There are no communication items tonight. First item on the agenda is to appoint the members of the Citizen Rate Review Committee. Public Works Director Javier Setevich will present. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. This evening, we are requesting council to approve recommended appointments to the Citizens Rate Review Committee for a term beginning today through December 31st, 2020. This committee will work with city staff to review the operational and capital strategies that will ultimately be supported by rates in the areas of water, wastewater, solid waste, and stormwater. The city clerk will administer the oath of loyalty to any appointees in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. May I have a motion and a second to approve the recommended appointments to the Citizen Rate Review Committee for the term beginning February 24th, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kano and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Open for council discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. City clerk will now please administer the oath.
With the following people, please join me up here. Marlin Booth, Alex Deschuk, Susan Fallon, Donald Lombardo, Terry Lowell, Judith Majeska, Charles McErling, Peter Minaric, Ernie... Thank you, please. William Perez, Randy Smith, Paul Goya, and Robert Payne. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of committee member according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm.
I'd like to thank everyone for their volunteering their time for this very important program for us, for the city. You'll have a tall order to get done, but I know you'll be you'll be well taken care of by the city staff. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within jurisdiction of the City Council. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, that makes that easy. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 2 through 8 by title only?
Number 2, Approval of Minutes. Number 3, Accept the Dedication of an Exclusive Water Meter and Line Easement from Airport Gateway East Property LLC, a Delaware limited liability company required for the development of the Airport Gateway East property. Number 4, Approve the Replat of Palm Valley Crossing Lots 8 and 9 Subject to Stipulations. Number 5, Conditionally Approve the Final Plaid of Elwood Logistics Center Subject to Stipulations in Council Action Report 2020-6910. Number 6, Approve a One-Year Extension of the Estrella Parcel 11.11 preliminary plat approval. Number 7, Approve a One-Year Extension of the Estrella Parcel 11.11 preliminary plat approval. And Number 8, Accept the Dedication of a Temporary Turnaround Access Easement for West Mountain Sky Avenue from AV Homes LLC and conditionally approve the replat of Cantomea Parcel 35, Lots 32 to 51 Subject to Stipulations.
Does anyone in the audience wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I know we have questions on a couple of items. Does anyone else from the council wish to remove an item or have questions? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Just a quick question on 6 and 7.
Good, thanks, that was mine too.
Good evening, Alex.
Good evening.
The question is just the year. What's holding it up for a year that we need a year extension for those two?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Pizzillo, the subdivision regulations allow the applicant to apply for a year extension. So Newland has requested that full year's extension. I've invited Mr. Teague, and he can address those questions himself to give you a status update on where they're at with that. I assume they don't intend to take a full year, however, it's granted if...
I was just looking what the issue was.
What the issue?
Yeah.
I can have him address that. In their narrative, he...
Pete, can you come up?
They were identifying coordination delays with Tucson Electric Power, the easement that runs through between 11E and 11F1, but I can have him address that for you.
That's kind of what I was looking for, Alex, but go ahead, Pete.
I'm not sure how to turn this on.
Can we get Elmo turned on, please?
We have to turn it on.
Let's just switch it over first. Oh, we literally have to turn it on. All right, Pete, so start talking, and then we'll see if we need the pictures.
I can fill in a few blanks. Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Couple of issues on the delay on this. The first one is that we are so busy out there right now, and we have a small group of people. There's four of us, two of us that manage all the engineering, two that manage all the construction. So in part, because of that, we have these slowed down a little bit. But then, to the point of TEP, Tucson Electric and Power. Tucson Electric and Power's got a 300 and 30-foot easement out there. And so when we work with them, which has just in the last couple of years started, they have not had to really address any crossings through their easement. And per their easement, it's an old BLM easement. It's been in place for quite some time. And all it says is we can conduct our business as long as we don't hinder their efforts to do business. So what we have here is I've got Alex's very nice drawing here that you can see right here. And then right here, we're crossing through there. And the problem with TEP, they're fairly easy to work with, but what it is, is they have one line currently, and they're permitted for two. So someday, they'll run a second line. So they're very, very cautious in where they want to put poles. It's going to be another, what they think, between a 340 and a 500K line, very large line. So they're very cautious on where we can put facilities, just for pole spacing, things of that nature. So one of the last times we worked with them, it took about nine months just to come to terms. And that was just right up in here. So they're just very cautious, especially when we've been there. So that's one of the major causes for the delay. We're in process of working with them now.
That's fine, that's all my question was, because I saw a year on there, and usually it doesn't take that long. So I was just kind of curious what the holdup was on that.
No, it's very, very rare. We've got plans ready to submit right now for both. It's this parcel here and then this parcel here, but we can't submit the parcels till we actually have the agreement first.
Understand, thank you, Pete.
You bet.
Any other questions for Peter, Alex? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to approve Items 2 through 8?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Pizzillo, a second by Councilmember Hampton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stipp?
Aye.
The motion carries.
There's one public hearing on the agenda for this evening. I'll go ahead and open that public hearing to consider the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Comprehensive Sign Package. Planner 2, Christian Williams, will present. I halfway expected you'd walk in with a sign in your hand or something.
It was too big to carry.
You set the bar too high, Christian. On a scooter.
May I have the desktop, please? All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor Stipp and City Council. I'm here before you this evening with a request from the applicant Pietro Martinez on behalf of owner PMB Palm Valley LLC to amend the Development Guidelines and Sign Package for Palm Valley Pavilion's East. The subject property is located in the north area of our city, near Litchfield Road and Interstate 10. More specifically, it is within Palm Valley Pavilion's East Shopping Center, which includes a Target and a Chili's, so it's right here. So let's go over a brief history of the center and its design history. The Palm Valley Master Plan Community began its development efforts in October 1989 as part of an initial 1,475-acre development. Commercial was contemplated near the intersections of Interstate 10 and North Litchfield Road. In 1996, to facilitate the development of a quality commercial center, the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Development Guidelines were approved by City Council when the preliminary plat was approved. In 1998, as the center expanded northwards towards West McDowell Road and added tenants, council approved an amendment to the Palm Valley Pavilion's sign standards and tenant signage criteria in October-November timeframe. This is also the year that Palm Valley Cinemas began showing films, and it subsequently closed in 2016. Now let's go into a bit more detail on these signs amendments and what they accomplish. In 1996, guidelines allowed for the construction of a wall sign for the overall Palm Valley development. That's located on the northeast corner of Litchfield Road and McDowell Road, as well as two Palm Valley Pavilion's wall signs at North Litchfield Road and the Palm Valley Pavilion's main driveway. In addition to these three wall signs, a freeway pylon sign was approved at North Litchfield Road, a little bit east of there, off Interstate 10. And a 32-foot-tall monument sign was approved in the median of Palm Valley Pavilion's main driveway. Moving to 1998, an amendment to the Development Guidelines allowed for an additional freeway sign, which is located at approximately 135th Avenue and Interstate 10. It allowed for also two 30-foot-tall monument signs, one on West McDowell Road and one on North Litchfield Road. And it reduced the height of the previously approved 30-foot-tall monument sign at Palm Valley Pavilion's down to a 15-foot-high median monument sign. The amendment also added more detail to the overall sign package, such as the inclusion of window graphics and canopy signs. In 2019, the former Palm Valley Cinemas was redeveloped into Goodyear Medical Plaza, which is a multi-tenant office building primarily catering to medical office users. And since the building consists of multiple tenants, they're requesting an additional sign on North Litchfield Road. You'll see that sign right here. The map on the right is the existing shopping center. In the center, we have zoomed into the existing part of the center to see where the sign will be located in relation to its nearby context. The new sign will be located on the current Chili's Restaurant Parcel off of Litchfield Road. It is approximately 150 feet north of the existing 30-foot-too-tall Palm Valley Pavilion's monument sign. If you like to count in palm trees, that's about two palm trees north. And the sign will be 10 feet in height. It will allow for six tenant panels, and the design is elegant and modernized while holding true components, colors, and themes of the existing sign. Staff has evaluated the impact of this comprehensive sign package amendment to the Palm Valley Pavilion's design guidelines. And with no major concerns being found, staff recommends approval of this resolution, which amends the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Development Guidelines to include a new Goodyear Medical Plaza monument sign. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Christian. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2034 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2034 declaring as public records of certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Legal Description, 1996 Sign Standards 1998 Tenant Signage Criteria, Goodyear Medical Plaza Palm Valley Pavilion's Amendment and Comprehensive Sign Package for Palm Valley Pavilion's East Map. Amending the Palm Valley East Development Guidelines by the adoption of the 1996 Sign Standards, the 1998 Tenant Signage Criteria, the Goodyear Medical Plaza Palm Valley Pavilion's Amendment, and the Comprehensive Sign Package for Palm Valley Pavilion's East Map as a comprehensive sign package applicable to Palm Valley East and providing for an effective date.
May I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2034?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Pizzillo, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
Can you tell me how close the sign will be to the stoplight that's in the middle of the shopping center?
So the existing sign is 32, or it's 150 feet south, so this is 150 feet. So it's approximately another 150 feet. It might be a little bit greater of a distance. And keep in mind...
150 feet from Chili's?
It's adjacent to the southern portion of Chili's. So where my mouse is here, this is the Chili's building. If you go about two parking spaces down, the sign will be in the right-of-way right here. So it's about 150 feet south.
Are there any other signs in that proximity?
There are not. The next sign that you reach is the wall sign that says Palm Valley Pavilion's. So that low sign that's right at the entrance.
I know some of our signage makes it difficult to know what's in the shopping centers. And since this is now a medical facility, I just want to be sure that it's being placed in a prominent position so that drivers can see that and not have an accident while they're looking to see. They won't know necessarily to turn in there, because, you know, every one of those buildings have a different number. But it'll all say Litchfield Road.
The good news is when you're driving northbound and you see this sign, it's the next driveway in, and then the center's right there.
Okay, and then so for, if we're coming to it from the north, going south, we would turn in at the light and then come around Chili's and go in?
Correct.
Turn at the light?
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
You know, they did a really nice job on that building. And I think you have to have a signage. There's nothing worse than looking in a place, especially that large, and you're looking, where's the doctor's office or where that facility is? And you can't figure it out because there's no signage on there. So no, I'm in agreement with this location of the sign package.
Thank you. Christian, I do have a question. Is there anything in this comprehensive, in their comprehensive sign package that allows or does not allow for wayfinding signs? Do you know?
To my knowledge, they might be allotted some internal wayfinding signs, but that's part of the whole center there.
Yeah, but we don't know for sure.
I'd have to relook through the hundreds of pages, but...
That was a popped into my head thought, so. With that, seeing no other discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stipp?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Christian. Next is the business agenda. I'd like to remind council to wait for a motion and a second before any discussion. Business Item Number 10 is to consider approving a budget transfer policy. In addition to that, Lori, you are also going to address Item Number 11, if I have this correctly.
Correct, one presentation for Items 10 and 11.
Right. So Items 10 and 11 will be in this same presentation, but we will obviously address each one of them individually. Our Finance Manager, Budget and Research Manager Lori Wingenroth. Thank you for coming forward.
Sure. All righty, so we good to go? All righty, as I mentioned, I have presentation on two agenda items that are related to budget and financial policies. The first item, let's see if we can, oops, slow. The first item is Item 10, and it's the Budget Transfer Policy. You first adopted a budget transfer policy in July. By state law, you have to approve all budget transfers that cross lines of appropriation. And we came to you and got a series of certain types of budget transfers pre-approved, so you don't see those every month in the regular transfer agenda item. We are asking for one change to the policy that you currently have in place. So currently, you do approve all uses of contingency regardless of the dollar amount involved. You also approve adjustments of $75,000 or more related to new revenues or donations or grants that don't have matches and CIP changes to an individual project that accumulate to less than $75,000. So those are currently in the policy, and those are remaining the same as we move in this recommendation. The change that we're recommending is that currently, carryovers are approved by the resolution if they are budgeted regardless of the dollar amount that we have to adjust that carryover by. In terms of, then if a carryover is not in the budget, in other words, we missed that it would carry over, you know, we thought something would be delivered in June, it didn't get delivered to July, those were required to come to you to approve them if they exceed $75,000. We're recommending that all carryovers, regardless of the dollar amount, budget transfers, be approved via this policy rather than coming to you. There is, it is somewhat administrative in nature in that it's just taking last year's budget for that particular one-time supplemental, one-time operating project, or for a capital project, looking at what last year's budget was, subtracting the actuals, and adjusting this year's budget to assume, to make the project continue to have the same budget. It also creates a little bit of risk in that carryovers are typically higher than we need, because we don't want to have, we usually are looking not to have our budget be too low. And that means there's a time period when these larger dollar ones, we have to wait to come to you to say, hey, we want to reduce this budget. During that period, somebody could arrengely spend those resources. So for those reasons, we're recommending that we make a revision to that budget transfer policy. In terms of the Agenda Item 11, this is the financial...
Lori, I know we're going to do two presentations, but these are two dramatically different. Would you mind if we pause for a quick set of questions on that first item?
I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And maybe no one's got any, but does any, Councilmember Pizzillo?
Thanks.
We're looking at budget transfers that are already approved budgets that's coming over. And to say the least, with, it comes to state laws, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that it doesn't automatically filter over. If you don't budget it, you can't spend it. That's the reason why you do the carryovers. You can't just say, well, it was last year, so we can automatically roll it over. State law says you have to appropriate it. So you have to guess at some point what is not done so that you can move over to the others. And that's why they always get a little bit tricky, because again, you're not going to be able to spend over what that project was budgeted. Is that correct? The only thing is, you don't know what percentage of that's going to be done, because we're starting the budget process now, and it's going to take till July 1 to start the new one. So I'm just only saying that for those that are watching out there, that this isn't really as big a deal as it sounds coming from, because it's already been approved. It's a mechanical issue, and because of state law, you have to budget appropriation, or you can't spend it, just can't automatically carry it over. So I don't have a problem with the change.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, that is something that's budgeted this year that we're just, you've done a good job of describing what's happening. In fact, we sent out instructions, we'll be sending out instructions tomorrow asking departments to come up with their carryovers. So this is how early in the year they're trying to decide how much they'll spend by the end of the year.
Thanks, Lori. So the only way that I can truly honor the mayor not being here is to make at least one mistake for the night, and I mean that very lovingly. I should never have allowed the discussion. We haven't had a motion in a second yet, so please continue with the presentation. I apologize to everybody else. I'm trying to move it along and keep it simple, but I got way ahead of myself. So I'll keep the attorney from blowing the top of his head off over there.
I should have glanced over there before I started answering the question.
I knew better, and as soon as I saw Darcy's eyes start to spin, I knew I was in trouble. I apologize, please.
They should have thrown a shoe at me or something.
It was my great idea, so let's go on to number 2.
No problem. So Agenda Item 11 includes the Public Safety Retirement Pension Financial Policy. This is required by state law that you annually adopt this policy. That the first time you adopted this policy was in March of last year. You are required to accept the funded status of those plans. So I've summarized the information here for the police and fire plans. I will tell you that last year's funded ratio were 63.1 and 70.8 for the police and fire respectively. So the policies we're putting in place are working. The fund is earning resources, so our position has been improving. In addition, just, you'll be accepting or indicating that the strategy you're using to enhance the funded ratio is a continuation of what the policy said this year. And that is that we will be making a prepayment for the pension of our resources into the pension fund equal to the amount we have budgeted for the city's share of those public safety pensions. And again, just to remind you, we budget for full employment, which means we'll be making a payment, assuming that every position is filled. And then in addition, every position would be paying pension, so that would include those individuals that might be in dropped that we aren't necessarily required to make a pension payment for. We're still making that prepayment into the fund for that purpose. In addition, we also make a prepayment of a portion of the employee's required contribution. The policy says that that is at the discretion of the Finance Director, and we make that payment of the 50 to 75... payment of in the 50 to 75% range. That's truly dependent on an analysis of cash flow to determine how much of, how much we can put in in advance for that purpose. The reason for these early payments are that fund earns fairly good revenue or earnings and the earlier we put the funds in, the more earnings we make. Then in terms of the financial policies, we are, staff is recommending a couple changes to the existing financial policies. You have those, two different versions of those policies in attachments two and three of the report for item 11. The first is, there's nowhere in stated written policy that the council approves changes in the ongoing position account. It is part of the state budget forms that you adopt each year, so it's implied from that that your action is required. But we really felt it was a good idea to put in the written policy that you do require, that your approval is required to change that position count. It doesn't change the manager's ability to move item, move things around, but they, we can't change the position count without council action. The other is to go along with that hopefully approved change in the budget poly, transfer policy. Just to clarify that, it would be the finance department providing, performing those reconciliations to support those budget transfers, to correct those carryovers to the proper dollar amount. And the last one is a recommendation to increase the amount of construction sales tax that's going to operations. That amount is currently at 4.5 million and we're recommending 5.1. Just a reminder, we showed you this particular slide at the retreat earlier in the year. All that we've done since then is added the current year, the most recent estimate for sales taxes. We have not changed the calculations or any of those types of things. We're making this recommendation after two years of this policy being in place. The five years lowest average is 5.1 million. It has been 5.1 million for the last two years. It will continue to be 5.1 million until we get 10 years past FY 11 because that's the lowest year. So it seems to be a fairly stable level of funding that would be ongoing as is supported by the subsequent years. But we're not making that recommendation as a result of a financial need that we've specifically identified in developing the budget. Just wanted to provide the information that if we want to set it, adjust that, there continues to be an ongoing level that remains the low. And by way of information, the five-year average when we established this policy two years ago was at 6.9 million. It's now at 8.4 million. And the 10-year add, or at that point in time, we had an eight-year average and it was 5.9 and we're now at a $6.9 million average for the last 10 years. With that, that's my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions after, it's appropriate for motion.
Well, wouldn't be smooth without it, I guess. Are there any speaker cards on either of these items?
No, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, we'll take these one at a time now. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 20202039 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution 20202039, adopting and approving the budget transfer policy.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20202039.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Any other questions on item 10? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the business is to consider adopting the financial policies, recommended changes in the policy, the public safety retirement system FY 2021 funding policy. Any speaker cards on this item?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, anyone in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the public safety retirement system FY 2021 pension funding policy as presented in attachment one and financial policies as presented in attachment two, which includes an increase from 4.5 million to 5.1 million in the amount of construction sales tax treated as ongoing general fund revenues. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Councilmember Cano, a second by Councilmember Pazillo. Open for council discussion.
Yes, so I just want to verify, so the pension, so employees are putting in 75, up to 75%, and then the city will come back and fill the rest of it? That's with the, with the drop system?
What, Vice Mayor, council members, what we're, what the policy is saying is that we will make a prepayment of the employee's share. And then as they are pay, as they receive their paychecks, we've already paid in their portion, so we, so it's just, the policy is trying to work to improve the funding ratio by getting money in there as early as quickly. So we're just prepaying the employee's share in addition to paying 100% of our budgeted amount.
Okay, I understand now, thank you. And then, and we're going from, you wanted to go from 4.5 to 5.1 dollars as well for the general fund money? So that'll go, okay, just to clarify. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Pazillo?
Just a quick, is there a timeline, you're prepaying on that, when it'll be all caught up by moving this up a little faster?
Your, Vice Mayor, council member, that your policy, if you read the policy at the end, it says that, you know, the, the current payments would get us to being paid off after 20 years. That's the actuarial assumption, so it always works that way. They just changed the actuary, so there's, it's hard to say when we would get to 100% funded, if we will ever get to 100% funded. The funding ratios we have are pretty good right now.
Right.
So, but it should continue to improve.
You know, as I know, as up here, there are some cities that, you know, it's almost the same price as hiring somebody, so, yeah, we're not to that point. But, yeah, it's, I agree with that policy. The other one on the 5.1, based on our very conservative fiscal approach, I think, because you're always going to get a lead time as soon as the permits or whatever the case, if there happens to be a slowdown on the horizon, you got, in my view, you have plenty of time to address that issue, so I don't have a problem, since that is a blow, which your average has been for the 10 years anyways. I'm in agreement.
Anyone else? So, just to be on the record, I was the one who pushed for the 4.5 as we did this a couple of years ago, just because we were uncertain. Me personally, I'm very comfortable with the 5.1. We will still revisit it every year during the, the policy process, so I think we're, I think we're okay with that from, from my perspective. So, I was the one to push for it. I wanted to clearly be on the record that I'm okay with the, with the push to 5.1. I think it makes a lot of real good sense and, and we can see where we're headed in the future. So, thanks to, thanks for entertaining me for the last two years. Seeing no other, no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Next item on the business is to consider ordering the sale of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, subordinate lien water and sewer revenue obligations, series 2020 bonds. Finance manager Jared Aklson, right?
Askelson.
Askelson, ah, should have known that one. Will present, Jared's going to present items 12, 13, 14, and 15. I will not pause for questions in between and we'll, we'll go from there.
Vice Mayor members of the council, I actually have a single presentation for the first item, which is for new funding, and then I'll have a separate one for the last three items that are all refundings, so we can break for questions after this first one. So, the first item we've got is new funding, a debt issuance of new funding, and we are going to be financing some water and wastewater infrastructure. And our journey begins about 12,000 years ago at the advent of human civilization. With, with the increased use of agriculture, permanent human settlements began to develop. All of these were dependent on being very near to surface water because there was nothing invented to transport water or to dig for wells or anything like that. Within 5,000 years though, we did invent flood irrigation and we began digging wells to access groundwater. So, we began to move our settlements a little bit further away from surface water. For those of you that read ancient hieroglyphics, you can obviously tell that we're talking now about one of the founding fathers of Egypt, Pharaoh Manyus the First. And the document you see there is obviously talking about the large water infrastructure project, the first recorded water infrastructure project that is out there. It was a series of dams and canals that created Lake Morris. And on the right, you see the hieroglyphic for Lake Morris, you have a water channel, a sparrow signifying small, and then body of water. So a small body of water created by a water channel. Unfortunately, for the Pharaoh, he was actually slain by a hippopotamus, possibly on the lake that he created. That hippopotamus could not stop human development though, and within 1,000 years, we were seeing well, public well structures, we were seeing storage facilities. And more importantly, we started to see the first sewer infrastructure. So we were seeing, these stone structures are actually first private toilets that we had, and while they probably were cold to sit on, they did their business of moving the potentially harmful wastewater out of our cities and allowed us to develop more. Within 2,000 years, we were building aqueduct structures that were transporting water hundreds of miles. We were seeing underground tunnels such as these canots that would also transport water. We were seeing citywide sewer projects such as the Chloaca Maxima that still is visible, the outlet is still visible in Rome today. We were lifting water with water wheels such as this Noria here, and we were building larger storage facilities such as the step well down here at the bottom right. And that brings us to today where we have aqueducts such as the Central Arizona Project that's bringing surface water 330 miles from the Colorado River. We're seeing drilled wells such as this rendering here of our upcoming new well 26 that is bringing water from hundreds of feet below the surface. We have modern storage facilities with steel tanks. We have, most importantly, the treatment of water now. We're seeing treatments such as what we see here, the reverse osmosis system at our site 12, along with our surface water treatment plant that we see a rendering of here. And then finally, we're also treating our wastewater like we hear, have here at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. So that brings us to what we're doing tonight, which is discussing this debt issuance. We're going to talk about the projects, most of which I just touched on. We'll talk about the purpose of why we do a debt issuance, and then we'll also talk about the payments that we'll be making. So first of all, the projects, I touched on most of these. We have $110 million of water infrastructure, mostly the surface water treatment plant, but also improvements in capacity increase at site 12 and a new well, number 26, that we will be drilling. We have $7 million of wastewater infrastructure, specifically capacity expansion at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. Why do we go out and issue debt in these purposes? This allows us to stay ahead of our capacity needs, allows us to size projects to increase the economies of scale, because if we were going to go out and increase, let's say, the water reclamation facility by 500,000 gallons each year, well, that would cost more than if we were to do a 4 million gallon expansion at this time. However, we would need to borrow the money now in order to get that done. And then finally, most importantly, is that it spreads the cost across those that benefit. So, by borrowing this money, this will, this will stretch those costs out across, most of this capacity is for future residents that aren't here yet to pay for it, and by borrowing the money, it will stretch that, those costs out across when they will actually arrive. The payments, so first of all, the debt is technically secured with utility revenues because that is a stable revenue source that investors like to see. So, on paper, you're going to see that it is, it is secured with utility revenues. However, we plan for that payment using utility revenues and also development impact fees. This was something that was added to the last development impact fee study and was, was, is, is going to be one of the sources that we'll use to pay for this debt. And the payments have been aligned to avoid rate spikes and also to maximize the, the development impact fees that we will be using. You'll see on the, the graph here how we've kind of backloaded a little bit some of those payments so that the growth will be there to pay for these and the debt, the development impact fees will come in to help pay for those as well. We're showing here how the new debt fits in with all of the other debts. A little caveat, the all other debt includes the refundings that we'll be talking about next, but you can see that we have our, our annual debt service payments hovering around $12 million. We'll see actually what the impacts of the refundings were next, but it will drop then in fiscal year 2031 down just below $10 million. And in closing, I'd like to say I talked with our Public Works Director Javier Setevich, and he says that we currently have no hippos in our water system, and these projects will not add any hippos to our water projects and to our water system. So, we don't expect to have a repeat of what happened to the Pharaoh 5,000 years ago.
I have 100 things I want to say. I'm not going to. Are there any speaker cards on this?
No, Vice Mayor.
Javier, you got anything you want to add? Okay, would anyone in the audience like to speak? If not, will the city clerk please read resolution 20202029 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 2020-2029, fifth supplemental resolution supplementing and amending the City of Goodyear, Arizona, resolution number 99-662, dated January 25, 1999, as thereafter amended and supplemented, which authorizes the incurrence of water and sewer revenue refunding improvement indebtedness, authorizing the execution and delivery of City of Goodyear, Arizona, subordinate lien water and sewer revenue obligations, series 2020, and the sale thereof to the purchaser thereof prescribing the form and other details of the series 2020 obligations, providing that such series 2020 obligations shall be subordinate obligations as defined in resolution number 99-662, as amended and supplemented, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust agreement and agreement, an obligation purchase contract, a continuing disclosure certificate, an official statement and forms of related documents, delegating certain authority to the finance director and other officers of the city, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this fifth supplemental resolution and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20202029.
Salute.
I have a, a motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Pazillo. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Loretano?
I'm not going to say anything inappropriate, okay? First of all, I did like your presentation. It's enjoyable. I don't know if you or Christian with the scooter, who's going to win? I don't know if you're trying to undo each other, but we'll see. In all seriousness, how long is this, these new upgrades, how long in the future will this take us or is it projected?
Vice Mayor, council member Loretano, that, our current projections, we're not, we're, we don't know at this point how far this will take us. We do have a, an update to our integrated water master plan that we're going to have to be doing in the next few years, and at that point, it would probably be a little bit more clear how long that would take us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next on the business, now you're going to do 13, 14, 15 together, is to consider ordering this, this is the sale, oh, the sale, this is the refunding, ordering the sale of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, subordinate lien water and sewer revenue obligations refunding, series 2020. Okay, topping it?
We'll see. So we'll start this discussion in the City of Venice, and while these are water and wastewater subordinate lien bonds that we're talking about, we're not here to talk about their water infrastructure in Venice, we're here to talk about their contributions to government finance. The City of Venice, back in 1,000 AD or so, was a city-state. Italy didn't exist, it was a city-state unto itself, and it was a merchant republic in that it had an elected body but was run mostly by the powerful merchants of the city. And from the years 1082 to 1170, they had a pretty good run, and they referred to themselves as the most serene republic. And they referred to themselves as the most serene republic. On the left, you see the Byzantine Empire, specifically that's Emperor Alexios the First. He entered into a trade agreement with the Venetians. And it was important for the Venetians to have this trade agreement because Alexios's capital was Constantinople, which was a hub of international trade at that time. So, it was a very big coup for them to get that agreement with the Byzantine Empire. Later, they transported, they transported Crusaders to the Crusader States, to actually the Middle East. And on the right there, you see Godfrey Abu Yahn, who was the first king of Jerusalem. And because of that transportation that they gave to the Crusaders, they were given beneficial trade rights with the Crusader States, also very important. So, everything was going well for Venice. And then in 1171, they made a poor business decision. They had some competition in Constantinople, specifically the other Italian city-state of Genoa. And they destroyed the Genoese city, the Genoese quarter of Constantinople, which didn't make the then grandson of Alexios Manuel, who was the emperor at that time, very happy. So, he jailed 10,000 Venetians. And he also, more importantly, confiscated their merchant fleet and all of their, their goods. So, this is obviously not a good development for a merchant republic such as Venice. So, they had to come up with a plan. And on the left there, you see their Doge, their elected leader, Vitali the Second. He said, "Let's build 120 ships, and we will attack the Byzantines, and we will free our goods, our fleet, and our people." But in order to do that, we need to borrow some money. And because this was a merchant republic, they couldn't just impose a tax on their people. Instead, they looked to borrow the money from their citizens, and they would repay the money with the spoils of war. On the right, you actually see the Venetian arsenal where they were going to be building those 120 ships. So, it was kind of a little bit different than what you had seen before where a government would impose a tax, a heavy tax on individuals to get money from them. Here, they were going to borrow the money and repay them with the spoils of war. Unfortunately for Vitali and for Venice, that did not work out very well as the plague struck the fleet before it ever arrived in Constantinople, and it returned empty-handed. The citizens lost their investment, and they weren't very happy about it. They weren't happy with the amount of risk they took there. So, they actually executed Vitali the Second. He lost his life, obviously. Way too much risk on the side of the borrower, way too much risk on the side of the lender. So, we have to come up with a different plan. And that's where we enter in what's called the Prestidi, which is more or less the first modern bond that, that was placed out there. So, in this case, they would borrow from their citizens, and they would pay regular interest rates, and they would repay the principal at the end of the term. And using the Prestidi, Venice, their stocks soared. So, the Prestidi was actually traded throughout Europe, the first real modern bond market. And you can see from some of the pictures here, you've got them sacking Constantinople, which is just outrageous to think that from a few years before. And on the right, you see some of the spoils of war, some of the art that they took from Constantinople in Athens. And Venice dominated Western Mediterranean trade at that point. So, they were using this financial instrument that really nobody else was using to help push them forward. So, today, we're using those same type of instruments, a little bit differently, a lot less risk, obviously, than Vitali the Second had. So, let's talk about what is a refunding? Why would we do it? And where do we see an impact of this refunding? So, first of all, refunding is really issuing new debt to pay off outstanding debt. Think of it as refinancing a mortgage, so to speak. And in this case, we're going to take four previous issues, and we're going to refund them and issue three new bonds. So, we're going to actually take two previous general obligation bonds and combine them into one in this case. But the 2010 and 2011 sewer, water and sewer are just going to be refunded in separate issues. And why would we do it? Well, first of all, we want to take advantage of the lower interest rates that we have out there. You also can use refunding to adjust the timing of payments. We're not really doing that, that much here. But overall, it's a tool that can be used for strategic debt planning, both in getting those better rates and maybe adjusting the timing with other bond issues that you may have out there. Where are we seeing the impact? All of these bonds are being paid for with water and wastewater utility revenues. So, that's where we're going to see that impact. So, overall, we're seeing savings of about $8 million over the life of these bonds. If we go to the next slide, we can see on an annual basis about $600,000 savings per year on our debt service payments for water and sewer. And you can see how that fits in. This is much like the, the graph that we had seen earlier. This is the total water and wastewater combined debt service payments. And you can see how it's dropping us from close to $13 million a year to just over $12 million a year in the beginning. And you can see how it goes throughout the life of the bond. Before we turn it over to any, for any questions, I'd like to just remember Vitali the Second and the sacrifice he made. He is a true martyr for government finance. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank our City Clerk, Darcy McCracken. After reading all of these resolutions tonight, I think she may be a martyr for government finance as well.
That's a good one. Thanks, Jared. Any speaker cards on any of these?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the City Clerk to read Resolution 2020-2030 by title only. We'll vote on each one of these separately.
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2036, Supplemental Resolution Supplementing and Amending the City of Goodyear, Arizona Resolution Number 99-662, dated January 25, 1999, as thereafter amended and supplemented, which authorizes the incurrence of water and sewer revenue refunding and improvement indebtedness, authorizing the execution and delivery of City of Goodyear, Arizona Subordinate Lean Water and Sewer Revenue Obligations Refunding Series 2020, and the sale thereof to the purchaser thereof, prescribing the form and other details of the refunding Series 2020 obligations, providing that such refunding Series 2020 obligations shall be subordinate obligations as defined in Resolution Number 99-662, as amended and supplemented, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust agreement and agreement, an obligation purchase contract, a depository trust agreement, a continuing disclosure certificate, an official statement and forms of related documents, delegating certain authority to the Finance Director and other officers of the city, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of this transactions contemplated by the Sixth Supplemental Resolution and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-2030.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hampton, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzillo.
Are these bonds, excuse me, that we're refinancing, are you extending the period of the original bonds that we're refinancing? Or are you keeping it in within the same period?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, we are keeping it within the same term of the original bonds.
Good. Second is, what was the interest rate that we expect to get on the refinancing and the interest rate under the old one? I was just curious what the gap is.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, the, the interest rate on, on these bonds, because we're actually going to be selling these bonds together with that larger, the larger new funding, the actual interest rate may vary because of what's happening in the market that day. So, while the effective interest rate will be around 3%, we may actually have a face value of 4% on these bonds. If we have a higher face value on that bond of 4%, we will have to, we will be able to issue less overall principal. So, if we issue, let's say we issue a 3% bond for $117 million. If we issued a 4%, we may issue, we may only have to issue $104 million. So, we're going to be doing a balancing act, kind of what, depending on what the market is, is doing in April when we issue these bonds. But 3% is about what the effective rate will be, even though the face value may be different.
What's the current percentage on the ones that are out there?
So, the, the current percentage is in the area of about 5%, 5 and 1/2%.
Do you look at a couple of points, possibly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hampton?
No, I think it's a great, we always need to keep looking at these interest rates and try to take advantage of as, as they come up. So, I appreciate you looking at it and the, being proactive on it. So, if the market changes a lot in April for whatever reason, we can always, we don't have to do this, we can back out if for some reason, if we have voted today and the market changes to where interest rates go up higher than they were, we can always keep, keep it how it is, correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, that, once we do this resolution, it's going to put a lot of things in motion. There is, there would be additional costs if we didn't go out for the bonds. The thing is, is that we would always be looking at how much savings we would get. And if we got to a certain point where it didn't make sure, it didn't make sense to do the savings, that's when we would have to start asking ourselves those type of questions.
Okay, yeah. I think, yeah, I think overall, it's a great, we need to, yeah, always keep looking. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I just want to add that because we're, we have such a large new issuance that's going on, if, if, if we weren't to go out with that new issuance, obviously, we'd have to stop those projects. These refundings are, are benefiting from having that large sale. So, the cost of issuances are being spread across all of these bonds. So, there is some advantage for us doing these all together like this.
Great. Councilmember Campbell?
What is the percentage we are now, the ones with the bonds we have now?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, we're in the 5 to 5 and 1/2. We actually have four different, we have four different issuances, so it varies a little bit, but it's 5 to 5 and 1/2%.
And you think we're going to be able to get some of it, 3 or 4 now?
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm sure we're not going to go belly up like the people that, in Italy. Now that you've called that to everyone's attention, but I've been assuming that if we don't, if, if, if it doesn't make sense, we won't do it.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
They're not going to storm the castle.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a roll call vote on Resolution 2020-2030?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. The next item we've already had a presentation on, which is item number 14, so I'm going to ask the City Clerk to please read, oh, I'm sorry. And we have no speaker cards on any of these, correct?
Correct, no speaker cards.
Okay. I'm going to ask the City Clerk to please read Resolution 2020-2031 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2031, Seventh Supplemental Resolution Supplementing and Amending the City of Goodyear, Arizona Resolution Number 99-662, dated January 25, 1999, as thereafter amended and supplemented, which authorizes the incurrence of water and sewer revenue refunding and improvement indebtedness, authorizing the execution and delivery of City of Goodyear, Arizona Subordinate Lean Water and Sewer Revenue Obligations Taxable Refunding Series 2020, and the sale thereof to the purchaser thereof, prescribing the form and other details of the taxable refunding Series 2020 obligations, providing that such taxable refunding Series 2020 obligation shall be subordinate obligations as defined in Resolution Number 99-662, as amended and supplemented, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust agreement, a, a agreement, a depository trust agreement, an obligation purchase, purchase contract, a continuing disclosure certificate, and official statement.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-2031.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pizzillo, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Any council discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next item and final of this bundle is to consider ordering the sale of the City of Goodyear, Arizona General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020. And I have, the City Clerk, please read Resolution 2020-2032 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2032, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Goodyear, Arizona General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020, delegating the authority to approve certain matters with respect to the bonds and the bonds being refunded, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, appointing a registrar and paying agent, and a depository trustee for the bonds, approving the form of certain documents and authorizing completion, execution, and delivery thereof, delegating the authority to approve and deem final a form of official statement, ratifying all actions taken and to be taken with respect to the bonds, and furtherance of this resolution, and authorizing any necessary budget transfers related to the bonds.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-2032.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Keno and a second by Councilmember Hampton. Any council discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries. Vice Mayor Stip?
Yes, ma'am.
On the previous resolution, it cut off on my script, so I need to go back and read the whole thing?
I'm going to have her read the whole action item again, then have you vote, if that's okay. And just for our reference, which number is this?
14.
14. 14, thank you. That was Hampton that said that.
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2031, Seventh Supplemental Resolution Supplementing and Amending the City of Goodyear, Arizona Resolution Number 99-662, dated January 25, 1999, as thereafter amended and supplemented, which authorizes the incurrence of water and sewer revenue refunding and improvement indebtedness, authorizing the execution and delivery of City of Goodyear, Arizona Subordinate Lean Water and Sewer Revenue Obligations Taxable Refunding Series 2020, and the sale thereof to the purchaser thereof, prescribing the form and other details of the taxable refunding Series 2020 obligations, providing that such taxable refunding Series 2020 obligation shall be subordinate obligations as defined in Resolution Number 99-662, as amended and supplemented, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust agreement, a, a agreement, a depository trust agreement, an obligation purchase contract, a continuing disclosure certificate, an official, official statement, and forms related of, of related obligation documents, delegating certain authority to the Finance Director and other officers of the city, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this Seventh Supplemental Resolution and declaring an emergency.
Okay, may I have another motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-2031?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Going once, okay. Item number 16 on the business agenda is to consider approving a development activity-related budget increase request and expenditure authorization. Development Services Director Christopher Baker, is that the whole gang coming up? Are you just going to do it all, Christopher?
Just me.
Okay, be brief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stip and Council. As you can tell from driving around the city, there is a significant amount of construction activity occurring in virtually every sector of the community. And it really truly is an exciting time to be here in Goodyear. We are welcoming new families and homes and apartments, new industrial and high-tech employers, new, and new retail and entertainment. The city is getting built right now before our very eyes, and I think everybody's quite excited about the trajectory that this city is on. With growth comes service demand. Each and every one of the projects that you see coming out of the ground or tractors moving dirt are reviewed for compliance with city standards, inspected to ensure they are safe, require mapping in our GIS system, and most of them, although not all of them north of the, uh, north of I-10, but most of them require city water meters. Tonight, I stand before you on behalf of the Engineering Department, the IT Department, and also Public Works, to ask for a budget increase and related transfers that total $1,049,000 out of the general fund and $182,500 in water operations. This funding is to be allocated to provide the much-needed additional capacity that is being created by the high levels of development activity in our community. The 1,049,000, or, excuse me, the $1,049,000 is to be broken down as follows. In the Development Services Department, we are requesting an additional $300,000 that would fund an additional two contract building inspectors and one additional contract building plan reviewer. In the Engineering Department is being requested for $686,400, and that would fund two additional plan reviewers, two additional civil engineering inspectors, and one additional permit tech. GIS is seeking $62,600, and that would fund a GIS analyst, a mapper, to help with the, getting the information into our systems. Finally, Public Works is asking for an additional $182,500 in order to be able to purchase additional water meters. It's important to note that our, that economic development will be deploying additional temporary help, but they'll be using some budget savings that are not part of this transfer. transfer, but they are asking for additional help as a result of increased activity as well. So tonight, I respectfully request that council approve the budget transfers totaling $1,049,000 in general funds and $182,500 in water operating funds as outlined in the car for you tonight. I'm available to answer any questions, and the other directors are available to answer questions to their respective departments.
Great. Thank you, Christopher. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers totaling $1,049,000 in general funds and $182,500 in water operating funds for one-time contract services and equipment purchases to address peaking development-related activity in the areas of development services, engineering, information technology in the GIS area, and water services, and approve an increase to expenditures from $761,500 to a new total of $944,000 for water meters. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
So, I have a question that you may not be able to answer, but we keep adding additional money to the GIS area in our city. Are we ever going to get a city map done?
So, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, thank you. I know that David Luhan, our GIS manager, is here, and I know he is, they work on city maps all the time, and I think maybe if you have a particular need, we could work through the city manager's office in order to ensure that those needs are being met, but...
If I'm asked once a week, I'm asked twice a week, why we do not have a map showing the layout of Goodyear with the street names, people do not know where sections are.
Sure.
And we just recently, where I live, was given a map of our development by lot number and street number, and then that immediately triggered the question, where's a map for Goodyear? Where do we know that we are going to have it? But I've only lived here 21 years, and I've not seen a map of Goodyear yet. You can give me sections, but you can't give me the whole enchilada. So, I'm hoping that someday we will have that capability, that we will be able to do a street map showing what we have in our city. I would think that would be a huge selling tool to the Economic Development Department as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Loretano?
Yes, I want to thank you because this is kind of a good problem to have. Obviously, we've always said if you need more services, to let us know so that we can make sure that our customers are happy, because we want to keep our customers, our builders, our consumers happy, because we don't want to go back to the time when Goodyear was not considered good to work with. So, I do support this. So, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? May I? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Thank you. Okay. Item 17 is to consider approving Epcor Water, Arizona Inc., and the City of Goodyear for the use of public rights of way. Real Estate Coordinator Linda Beals.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. This evening, as noted, I'm here to present a license agreement for, between the City of Goodyear and Epcor. As you, the city, I'm sorry, Epcor provides service for potable water for a portion of the City of Goodyear residents that locate, their service area is located with boundaries that are approximately Camelback Road on the north, McDowell on the south, Perryville on the west, and Cotton Lane on the east. This agreement is a five-year license agreement for them to continue to place and have their water lines within city right-of-way within these areas where they serve. It is consistent with their prior agreement, which will have them paying 2% of their gross revenues and fees. These fees over the past five years have averaged approximately $10,000 per year. This is up from the prior period, which was closer to $6,000. This is due to the fact that Meritage-Sedea Development has been continuing to grow, and that's where the majority of their new customer base has developed. So, we do expect to see some increases as Sedea continues to develop over the next few years. That pretty much concludes my presentation, unless anybody has any questions.
Any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to appro- after the motion. Don't try to get me off track. Can I have a motion and a second to approve a five-year license to Epcor for the use of public rights of way to provide potable drinking water services to the properties within the boundaries of their certificate of convenience and necessity within the City of Goodyear? May I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pizzillo, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Hampton?
I just had a question around the 2%. Where'd the 2% number come from, or how long have we had the rate of 2% for the, to use that, our easement, or our right-of-way?
2% is consistent with the other utility providers with regard to gas and electric. It's consistent with what other communities charge for this type of use of the rights of way with regard to utilities. Some of our other rates, like our licenses, you'll hear us talk about the fiber and some of those others. Some of those are set by law, so, and they may have different derivatives of what we charge and can't charge as part of it, and they may have some offsets. So, in this case, this is consistent. I don't know the exact year when we started charging 2%. I do know our last license agreement was 2%.
Okay. Do we have, I mean, now, there's any, there's no inflation riders, or any clauses, or anything like that, or? I'm just, I was just curious around it.
No. The percentage, you would normally see an increase, not in the percentage, their gross revenues have increases in them. So, it would be an added inflator on top of something that already has inflators built into it. We also pick up additional monies, obviously, as they have customers come on, but they have their own inflators built into what they charge.
Okay. I was just around, I was just curious all around that, that percentage, so. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Okay. Thanks, Linda. Item 18 is to consider adopting the 2020 state and federal legislative agendas. Government Relations Manager Jenna Keriko will present. Welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor and council, thank you for having me here tonight to present to you for your consideration Goodyear's 2020 federal and state legislative agenda. I don't have hippos or Byzantines, but I think I have it down to five minutes, so please bear with me. If approved, these documents will assist me in weighing in on bills at the Capitol that are the most important to you and to the benefit of our Goodyear community. Like I said, I know it's late, so I'll do my best to be quick, but if you have any questions throughout the presentation, please don't hesitate to stop me and let me know. Just because it's my first time in front of you, I wanted to take a moment to give a brief overview of government relations and its role within the city and externally, which includes advocating on behalf of the city in front of the legislature and regional agencies, working with local and regional agencies, and providing staff support for the mayor, council, and management in their roles on regional committees. Of particular significance, Mayor Lord serves on the Executive Committee of the League of Cities and Towns. This leadership role helps ensure Goodyear will have a seat at the table during the creation of the League's policy development. She also serves on the Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Committee and Transportation Policy Committee, and as well as Goodyear's representative on the Luke West Valley Council, which meets quarterly to discuss the happenings of Luke Air Force Base and the surrounding community. Vice Mayor Stipp serves on the Valley Metro Board of Directors and Audit and Finance Subcommittee that helps advocate for our city's transit needs. Councilmember Loretano serves on the Board of the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, as well as the National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Advocacy Committee. Councilmember Campbell serves on MAG's Human Services and Community Initiatives Committee, as well as NLC's Military Communities Council, Women in Municipal Government, and Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. Last but not least, Councilmember Hampton serves on NLC's Community and Economic Development Committee. This is just a list of committees that Government Relations helps to support. I recognize that you all are actively serving in additional roles throughout the community, but it was important for me to take a moment to highlight this involvement throughout the region on these various committees, because it helps emphasize how fortunate it is the city is to be represented by such an active and engaged council. My job of representing the city is made easier through councils and management's leadership and positive reputation across the region, so I thank you all for that. Of course, you know the City of Goodyear is represented by the states' two U.S. senators, Martha McSally and Kirsten Sinema, as well as Congressional Districts 3 and 8, served by Raul Grahalva and Debbie Lesko, respectively. You may have noticed in your packets, you have two separate handouts, one for your federal legislative agenda and one for your state legislative agenda. Although there's a lot of crossover between the two documents, I thought it might be beneficial for you all to have a dedicated federal agenda, as a few of you head to DC next month and may be meeting with our federal delegation. On the federal side of things, I am keeping an eye on policies and budgetary shifts that may impact the mission of Luke Air Force Base, including protecting military airports, limiting encroachment, and expanding future missions. Goodyear is also a part of the West Valley Partners that helps provide federal representation to support and protect the base. I also wanted to highlight the importance of working with our federal delegation to build a robust transportation network. On the regional side of things, the city is working in collaboration with MAG and our local communities to potentially extend the current half-cent transportation sales tax that's set to expire in 2025. But on the federal side of things, we want to encourage policies and budgetary priorities that emphasize the importance of local infrastructure and maintenance needs, and allow us the ability to seek additional federal and grant opportunities. Our city is encompassed within two state legislative districts, 4 and 13, represented by Senator Lisa Tondo, Representative Charlene Fernandez, and Geraldine Peaton in LD4, and Senator Kerr, Joanne Osborne, Representative Tim Dunn in LD13. As you all already know, we are currently in the middle of the state legislative session. Today marks the 43rd day at the State Capitol, and is the official start of Crossover Week, where chambers can begin to hear bills that have passed the other chamber. We have a record number of bills introduced this year, 1,581. This does not include 126 memorials and resolutions, and the budget bills that we anticipate being introduced sometime in the next couple of weeks. Since I created this presentation, Governor Ducey has signed an additional two bills for a total of three, and not yet vetoed any. Before I dive into a few of the state guiding principles, I wanted to quickly explain the process that I take when, before determining a position on a bill. It starts with me reviewing every piece of legislation that's introduced, and depending on the subject area, I will refer relevant bills to department staff for their review and insight. Based on the feedback I receive, I consider the bill through the prism of these guiding principles, and that allows us to take a position. Listed here are two key tenets of the state legislative agenda: to preserve local funding and to oppose preemption of local authority. These are common themes that we see each year as the state considers policies they deem to be of statewide concern that would eradicate our local decision-making ability. One example of this is a bill we're currently opposing in coordination with the League, House Bill 2841, which requires cities to adopt by ordinance a housing affordability zoning overlay district over at least 30% of all vacant land that's zoned for single-family residential use within the municipality. Once the district is established, the city would essentially have no say in the development that incurs inside its borders. This is an example of far-reaching preemption that erodes the city's ability to have smart growth and healthy neighborhoods. This week, as I mentioned, the legislature is hoping to introduce a budget. I've heard that the House and governor's office are close to a consensus, but a lot of work is needed to get the Senate on board. Reaching a budget deal in a year with a surplus is often harder than in years when we have to make cuts, because everyone has important priorities that they'd like to fund. The good news is, what has been made clear in the legislature and governor's office is that infrastructure funding will be a priority. So, at this time, I don't anticipate any major cuts or sweeps to local governments. So, beyond those guiding principles, I have here a few of the major themes of this session. For the sake of time, I'm happy to highlight any of these or update, but beyond the Friday weekly updates that I email, there is no significant change. So, if you'd like me to elaborate on any of these, or if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those. It's the end.
Look at that. Perfect. Thanks for the presentation. This is item 18, so we would ask, no speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Anyone want to say anything? Okay. So, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 20202038 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2038, adopting a 2020 state and federal legislative agenda and providing authorization to the city manager or her designee to take action.
Great. May I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20202038?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hampton, a second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
I'm assuming that you followed the League's suggested support and opposition, and we're not just going out on our own to sponsor a bill or look at a bill that is not out there? Because I get, I get their legislative overview every week. I get Avondale's every week. I get Surprise every week, and basically, it's all the same. So, I'm just assuming that at some point, the intergovern, intergoves must get together with the League and decide what bills are the best for their cities and what isn't. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, that's absolutely correct. The intergoves meet every Friday, and we bring to the table bills that each city has identified as important and significant to them, and we advocate what we believe the League's position should be.
Well, then, do you go to the League if you're meeting every Friday, or do you meet every Friday with the League?
We meet every Friday with the League.
Okay. And is our city going to continue to hire lobbyists at, in DC that will follow the federal bills for us?
Vice Mayor and Councilman, Councilwoman Campbell, I don't believe we have a federal contract at this time, but as part of West Valley Partners, we do contribute for federal representation for Luke Air Force Base.
No, that has nothing to do with it. Do we not have a federal contract, a city manager? We did before.
We have in the past. We have not recently.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we always meet with them when we go to DC. Kind of, yeah. Councilmember Keno?
Last year, when we went to DC for NLC, we met with Senator, both Senators, Sinema and McSally, and I know this was a question the mayor was passionate about, but asking about some federal support for dealing with homeless, and essentially, they said, you don't want us doing our case management, but we're not looking for them to do our case management. Certainly, there's a lot of able facility, providers here, but do you foresee any relief at all from, at the federal level for helping dealing with the homeless?
Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Keno, I don't have anything currently flagged, but I will say on the state level that this is an issue that we continue to talk about, and I do anticipate having interim meetings with the League and with various stakeholders to introduce legislation next session to help address this issue. Believe it or not, the affordable housing overlay district bill that I highlighted was the home builder's attempt at addressing the homeless issue- Believe it or not, the Affordable Housing Overlay District bill that I highlighted was the home builder's attempt at addressing the homeless issue and affordable housing issue. So I think if we can all come to the table, we can find a middle ground that's not so offensive.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
You know, I know sometimes the League sometimes has a tendency, when they're negotiating, to try to play nice with the state legislators, and I can appreciate that point of view, but my biggest concern on the two issues that are out there is how much would they give into on the new contractor one that's out there? Because I think once you get that camel's nose under the tent, if they give anything as far as a size amount when it comes to improvements, you know, as being exempt, or when it comes to that overlay or any type of thing, I would hope that we strongly oppose any of that. Because my biggest concern is, you know, I didn't mind so much when they did it with the small stuff, but my big concern is the amount of dollars we could lose if they turn around and exempt those improvements once the shelves are built. You know, I think of Nike, I think of that big building right down the street from us, and when they go to negotiate to try to come up with some common ground, I would wish at some point they would hold their ground and says, you know what? Cities like ours have a lot to go, that's all done for growth, that money's used for one time in our capital infrastructure, to please leave that stuff alone. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hampton?
I just had a quick, I was ignorant on, what is prime contracting?
Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Hampton, that was the issue that Councilman Pizzillo was, I think, alluding to. House Bill 2404 would modify the definition of alteration and modification for prime contracting classification. So actually, I'm pleased to report that the City of Goodyear has been instrumental in providing numbers that help to just really address how bad this legislation is. So Hutmacki did a $13 million tenant improvement that the city received, just under $300,000, $280,000 in local TPT, that would not be taxable under this current bill. And to Councilman Pizzillo's point, I do feel confident that at this moment, we have the votes in the House to stop this bill, and if it does get through for political reasons, I feel even more confident that we'll be able to stop it in the Senate.
Great, thanks. With no other questions, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You have a tall hill to climb in your job, but with that, may I have a roll call vote on Resolution 2020-2038?
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thanks. Okay, this is the time for, does council have any comments, commendations, reports on current events, or requests for future items? Look at that. Okay, city manager?
Thank you. Mayor and council, I wanted to, Vice Mayor and council, excuse me, I wanted to provide an update on spring training. Unfortunately, the rain did not go away on Saturday, and we had to do a rain out on our official opening day. But on Sunday, Opening Day Take Two, the Cincinnati Reds hosted the Chicago White Sox in front of about 3,600 fans, and operations ran smoothly during that first game. Wanted to give a special thank you to the ballpark team and their maintenance staff for working all the long hours to prepare the ballpark and the fields to play for the season. Spring training games at Goodyear Ballpark will be played every day through Sunday, March 22nd. Enjoy.
Great, thank you. With no other business, our next regular meeting will be a week from tonight, March 2nd, at 6:00 PM. No work session.
At this time, there is a work session planned for 5:00 PM. It did not make it to the agenda.
Okay. 5:00 PM next Monday, March 2nd. With no other business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.